Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance empowers this board to hear references from the city council, applications for variances and special uses, and appeals from the decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, we will either make a final determination or send a recommendation to the city council. I'm Lori Summers, the current chair. Present here with me tonight are board members Matthew Rogers, Beth McLennan, Clara Weinberg, and Scott Gingold. We therefore have a quorum. Also present here tonight from city staff are Melissa Klotz, Dennis Marino, and Ken Cox. This is a formal hearing, and we have rules that govern our proceedings. Our most important rule is that only one person may speak at a time. It is not just civility, but it is necessary to accurately record our proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is that we hear first from the staff on the documents in the file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or repellent. After the applicant or repellent has completed their initial submission, any person who has a legal interest in real property located within 500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application or appeal may then present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and statements have been made and received, the applicant or repellent will be given an opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Board members may ask questions of anyone offering testimony or statements at any time. All testimony and statements will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we ask that you limit your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address, and be sure that your name is printed on the sign-up sheet at the entrance. Because we do not have a court reporter, it is imperative that you speak at a microphone so that your testimony or statement will be recorded. We are audio and video recorded in this space and subject to broadcast. When all of the testimony, other evidence, and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. We usually try to adjourn no later than about 10:30 and take a case no later than about 10 o'clock. I do think we have a full agenda tonight, but I do think that we will certainly at least get well underway started on our last case, that's the hope, so we'll keep track of that as we go along. Our first matter of business before we get into tonight's cases is to review our meeting minutes. We have a draft from May 7th. Were there any corrections regarding those minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion regarding those minutes?
I move that we approve our meeting minutes for May 7th, 2013, as they stand in draft form.
Second, the motion?
The motion's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I'll note that Member Weinberg was not present at that meeting, therefore it's not voted. We've carried this floor.
Neither was I.
Sorry, Scott.
I didn't vote either.
Sorry, I missed you. And Scott, Mr. Gingold was not there as well. We do have a positive of three votes, and we will carry those minutes. Moving on to our first case, which is new business of 2018 Lake Street. And Melissa, if you could read that in?
Michael Lowe, property owner, applies for major zoning relief to expand a non-conforming use in a non-complying structure for a rear yard two-story addition to a two-flat. The applicant requests to expand a non-conforming use, a three-flat to be de-converted to a two-flat in the R2 Single Family Residential District in a non-complying structure, existing legally non-conforming setbacks, lot size, and parking, zoning code section 6644 and 6645, and a side yard setback of 2.6 feet where five feet is required, zoning code section 6837A3. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents on file for the case include variance application submitted April 24th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plan of survey dated August 10th, 2012, proposed site plans and elevations, letter of support from neighboring property, aerial map, zoning map of property, image of property, and spark meeting minutes from May 1st, 2013.
Okay, with that, if I could swear in anyone who thinks that they wish to speak with us at all regarding 2018 Lake Street, if I could have you stand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And if the applicant could come up and... Sir, just for the record, if we could have your name or address before you begin?
Okay, it's Michael Lowe. My home address is 1143 Forest Avenue in Evanston, and the address of the property is 2018 Lake Street.
Thank you.
And what I'd like to say today is we are asking for a modest expansion of basically the back end of the building by five feet, and we believe that that's necessary to expand the back bedroom that was currently only six feet wide. And we think that this is something, it's not like a giant family room, we're trying to be conscientious about the neighborhood and match things, but we think that this will make it safer. And we have a tenant who lives at the building, and she has, she couldn't make it, she's in her wheelchair tonight, but she has like a two-minute little presentation, recording that I'd like to play, if that's possible? Is that?
I don't know how we handle that. I suppose we'll allow it, we need to, we may need to have you email that to us or something?
Sure.
That we have a recording?
I am writing about the addition to 2018 Lake Street that Michael Lowe and John Benson are proposing to do. This addition will correct many structural and design problems with the building. I am 68 years old and have cancer and am confined to a wheelchair. The back bedroom is too narrow for me to go into with my wheelchair, therefore preventing me from access to this room. This has prevented me from accessing clothing and dishes and other items in the room. The doorway is very narrow and the floor slopes down. This addition is very important to me because it makes my life better because I will be able to go to all parts of the apartment. I have lived in this building for over 10 years and have never had someone make so many improvements as Mike and John. Many landlords just let buildings go and collect their rent. By allowing Mike and John to improve the building, you are helping them provide nicer places for people like me. I know they would collect just as much money from my voucher if they did not do these building improvements, so I applaud them for having the decency of providing a nice place for me to live. Leila Terrell, 2018 Lake, Unit 1.
So she kind of...
Could you just give us her name really quick?
Yeah, Leila Terrell. E-L-E-I-L-A is the first name, T-E-R-R-E-L-L. And as far as the variance on the side, it's just for the small section of five-feet extension. And the neighbor to the west that's directly next to that does support and did send a letter into the city supporting that to Melissa. So that's really all I have to say, and thank you very much. Any questions?
Just, I'm gonna, if you want to just hold on for a second, just so that we can kind of go through here. The understanding is that basically we have a non-conforming, non-conforming, non-conforming use, which automatically brings it in, but we would also have, we'd also have the same variance, basically even if it was a conforming use that was trying to do this type of replacement, correct?
That's correct. The side yard setback variance would be required no matter what, because this is a non-conforming use that brings in an additional variance because it will be expanding the bulk of a non-conforming use.
One of the things that I did just want to talk to you about, because it is a non-conforming use, and I appreciate certainly the fact that we're kind of bringing it closer to conformity in general in terms of the number of units and that sort of thing.
Right.
But the one thing that sort of stuck out to me as I was considering this was the fact that the exit stair from the second floor not being worked into the stair that's on the inside, and therefore sort of being the kind of sore thumb of like, this is a two-flat. Like, to me, that sort of rings like...
Right. Well, I think, I think it'll look good, I don't know. We've done it so the first floor just exits right out the side, and the second floor, it's just a single stair going down. There's no big porch, it's not like a big balcony or anything, it's just a, you know, simple steps.
Would you consider, would you consider, you know, your project still feasible if there was a condition that that be, that exterior stair be incorporated into the interior stair?
Right, that's a good question. We actually wouldn't because, let me tell you, right now it's a three-flat, and we're making it into a two-flat, which means that we're duplexing the first floor in the basement.
Correct.
So the only way to do that is to have it, you know, that stairway be used as adjoining, per city code. To do that, we need to make it adjoining space so that the living area is all one area. And we didn't want to extend too far into the backyard with the actual building.
When did you purchase the property, Mr. Lowe?
In November.
This Pat, November 12?
That's correct.
Okay, and so, just for clarity, I assume the six-foot-wide room was in that condition when you bought the property?
Correct, yes. It was, yeah, the property was in general in kind of disrepair, and our goal as our company is to provide quality housing. You know, I did leadership Evanston with the housing, low-income housing. We don't consider ourselves low-income housing, but it's affordable housing at high quality. And I think that one reason they passed this variance to allow expansions and things of the two flats is that it's an affordable way for people to live in Evanston. And I plan to live, once my kids, my kids still have four more years, but to live in one of my buildings as a two-flat, because it's a, it's a great way to address property taxes and things like that.
Can you tell us a little bit about your, what's the company that you're...
Okay, it's called Look Properties, and we own a number of two-flats in Evanston, and we rent them to all kinds of people from different walks of life. And we try, in all of our apartments, we don't have carpet, we have hardwood flooring, we do nice kitchens with granite tops and things like that. And we tend, you know, I don't know, we just, that's what we're trying to do. I think we're trying to provide really nice housing in areas not right by the lake, is, you know, our buildings don't tend to be, tend to be a little farther west than that, maybe ridge, west of Asbury, just in that area. And so that's, that's our goal, is to make Evanston a really quality, it is already a quality community, but to continue to make it into a way that's still affordable, but nice for people living.
In the area in the basement that is labeled wet bar?
Yes.
What sorts of appliances, anything like that, will be in there?
Really just probably, there's already a small sink there, but there won't be any kind of stove, or no dishwasher, just a sink. We thought about that, I just didn't want to tear it out because it looks pretty nice and nice cabinets. And every year, there's an inspection from the City of Evanston, and one thing I've noticed is they're very interested in any kind of stoves and things, and so we don't do that. And we're trying to be legal here, you know, we are being legal here.
Our concern isn't necessarily with you, but what happens afterwards sometimes also raises concerns for us.
Right, and I think that, my belief, and I, because I've been, we've been doing this for a few years now, is that there's no way, well, first of all, it's joined together, so that is legal. That's one thing we're trying to do, is make it, you know, we're, you know, obviously we're, everything's being inspected and things like that, and in the future, they're really, they inspect every year, and I don't know how anybody could, to do something that wouldn't be possible, or it wouldn't be possible to have another apartment there.
At this time, was there anyone else who wished to speak with us regarding this case?
Should I sit down?
Charlie Booker, 2022 Lake Street.
Sir, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of this proceedings?
Baker.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, if you could step up to the microphone so we make sure we get you recorded?
My name is Charlie Booker, and I'm here on behalf of the neighbors of the case matter that we have before us. The design of what's going on seems to be a little bit different on paper from what is going to actually be done. It's been our experience in the neighborhood that there have been lots of pressure placed on our property and on lots of properties in the, in the area. The property immediately west of us and maybe a property next to us.
Did you say, sorry to interrupt, sir, but did you say 2022?
Yes.
With your address?
I'm two doors west of...
Got it, okay, sorry.
...of the case property that is in question.
Go ahead, please proceed.
And we wish to sort of display our concern or display our disapproval for what's going on, because when you expand property and take up green space that's there, you, you de-characterize the neighborhood, you change dynamics, change scenery, and you put just a lot of pressure on what's around there. So, in the property where we are, we at one time wanted to do something with the basement, but we were strictly told that the basement is not to be rented, or it's not to be used as living space. Of course, if you live there, perhaps that's one thing. So, we think that the addition and the expansion will, will create problems with parking, problems with drainage, problems with the setting, problems with the site quality for the neighborhood. And we're right across the street from the school, that's the problem with properties in Evanston now. You seem to take up all of the green space and don't leave much green space for, for what's left. And to me, that doesn't connote a good stance for the Evanston community. If you start with something like what's proposed here, we think it's just the beginning of something that's going to distort the appearance of Evanston and distort what two-flats are actually are about. We don't have anything to do with what goes on the inside of the property and how it's made better, but the things on the outside is what we express some concerns about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Charlie Booker, 2022 Lake, and I'm Charlie's better half.
All right, I'm gonna swear here, ma'am. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have lived at 2022 Lake Street, which is two doors down from case in point here, for 36 years. It's true what the gentleman said about the, you know, the new owner said about, you know, the basement being an illegal apartment. That was due to the fact that I guess the owner can live in the basement, and that was the previous owner. So certainly we understand to reduce from three apartments to two. The bedroom in question on the back, on the back of the first floor, there's one on the second floor too, but anyway, those were enclosed back porches. They were never meant to be bedrooms as... They were never meant to be bedrooms as living there or renting to anybody that lived there. That's all it was. It was not heated, it was not insulated. The previous owner might have run a little, what you call it, flooring, that, the heat that comes through the floor, she may have tried to do that, and, and rent it and call it a bedroom. But it was never meant to be used, you know, in the winter for sleeping, or for anything other than storage and maybe sitting out there. But that's what it is. It was an enclosed back porch, it wasn't a six-foot bedroom. As far as the duplexing goes, and as my husband said, we don't have anything to do with what goes on inside, but, and I'm sure it's perfectly legal. But once the first floor is converted to duplex, my understanding, five bedrooms, the lady in the wheelchair can't even get to the basement on the steps, she's in a wheelchair, she doesn't need to get to the basement. And furthermore, once it's turned into five bedrooms, I would think the rent would go up, and she would be forced out, because she wouldn't be able to afford the increased rent. And certainly, probably, if the reason is to increase the rent, well, that's certainly the privilege of the, the new owner. But I believe she'd be forced out. Anyway, with five bedrooms, there would be more people, parking's already a problem. The people usually, our experience has been, in these kinds of situations, people after a year or two move out, so there'd be more transients, you know, people in and out, and more people, more cars to park. And certainly, well, my other concern is that it would increase our taxes, and our taxes would go up. So, I know you have a lot before you to consider, and I thank you for listening to me.
Actually, ma'am, I had some questions. I noticed that your, the, a few of the buildings there seem very similar to each other.
There are three, the three two flats, 2022, 2020, and 2018.
Do you have a similar sort of enclosed porch?
Oh, no, not similar, identical.
Okay.
The three two flats were built by the same contractor. And of course, they're older buildings, but all three of them were identical. They were all enclosed back porches. It's just that we left ours where it is, and we'll sit out there in the summer, you know, storage. But the previous owner did, at 2018, call it a bedroom, because it was a two-bedroom apartment, and she called it a three-bedroom, and she ran that, what you call it, with the heating in the floor, where they, she had some type-
Radiant heating?
Yeah, she had, thank you. And so she called it a bedroom. That's why it's six feet, is because it's an enclosed back porch. And it wasn't insulated or anything, anyway. And it's just off of the, the bedroom, it's a bedroom that's there, and then it's just a door that goes to the enclosed back porch off of the bedroom.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Ms. Booker? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, sir?
Hi, I'm John Benson, I'm Mike's partner in Look Properties. And I just want to address some of the things that our, our new neighbor brought up. We bought this property in November, we own 10 properties in Evanston, they're various sizes from one single family, mainly two flats, a three flat and a four flat. And so, first of all, the side setback is supposed to be five foot, but the main building is 40, 50 feet long, and it's two and a half feet setback on the west side. So we're not, all we want to do is match the existing building for that five, that new addition in the back, so that, you know, we're not making a major setback change there. It's just for the new part, we want it to match the existing. The people that live just to the west of us that are most affected by that have already said they don't care, that's fine. The external stair question that you brought up, I understand, they cannot look attractive. The, as Mike said, you know, we certainly, we try, we want our properties to look as good as possible, so we do try to take aesthetics into consideration. And, you know, of course, we could, you know, enclose that, I suppose, but then that's brings on another problem, right?
There is no such thing as a good-looking, well, I went, okay, I'm going to take that back, there is such a thing as a good-looking two-story stair, but-
Right.
Probably not in the
Yeah.
level of construction, and certainly, no matter what it was made out of, it's, it, it really ca, it really calls attention to the non-conforming use, instead of trying to make it blend in.
Well, this isn't, it's not non-conforming, they have a two-flat there, correct? I mean, we're, it's, that's the-
It is non-conforming as a two-flat, it, it's located in the R2 Single Family Residential District.
Okay, but it's, it's a legal-
Legally non-conforming.
I see, okay, I'm sorry, all right.
So, it, you can leave it as a two-flat, because it's legally non-conforming, but it's still non-conforming, and to make it, and so the idea, or the ideal would be that it would certainly maintain as much of an appearance of conformity as possible.
Well, we will strive to do that as best as, as we can. We did a duplex, one of our other properties, we did this with the first floor and the basement unit. It was being used as a three-flat, and wasn't legal or conforming at this other location, and, and the city has been very happy with the way we integrated those, the basement and the first floor. The, the gentleman that preceded me brought up that the back, doing this would take away green space, or, or damage the, the environmental impact. There's no nice trees or anything that were affecting by this, it's, the backyard is relatively deep, there is a tree, but it won't be, you know, this isn't going to affect the tree. There's a garage in our back of our, our lot, and our tenants can park there. So, you know, it's, there are other buildings on our block that extend farther back in their lots than our building, so that's not, it, it doesn't appear to have a major impact. This back, what our neighbor mentioned, that it was a back porch, perhaps well before we ever got it, it was a back porch, but this, these, both of these rooms are insulated, they have closets, there's windows, there's siding. One of our tenants is a Section 8 tenant, the one that Mike played, Section 8 comes out and inspects, as you probably know, they approved that, that room, even though we think it's very small, they approved it as a bedroom, so it's not a back porch on either level. The, the basement is, if we are allowed to do this duplex, that's going to be a rec room area. There's a lot of people with families that love to have area for their kids to go, rather than just be on the one level. There would be one bedroom down there, it wouldn't be five bedroom. So, that's, that's erroneous. Ms. Terrell wishes to stay there, the, we like Ms. Terrell very much, she's a nice woman, she's a, she has several fairly large families, she is in poor health, she has a wheelchair, she'd like one of her daughters to live with her, that's fine with us. Her daughter would give us some, you know, additional rent for that, and that's our plan going forward. And as, as Mike said, when we bought the building in November, and the city has a record, there were about 10 or 12 code violations, which we repaired in fairly short order. All of those have been taken care of. So are there any questions that I can answer?
I guess, I, I don't know, I guess just to clarify, just to make sure that we've got the correct plans here, I mean, the, just in terms of the basement, the basement plans that we have show certainly at least two, but, you know, I mean, obviously, there were probably like three rooms, like it's basically, there are three rooms that qualify as, I guess if they were, are you, are you being required to put egress windows in, in the basement here? Actually, it doesn't look like these are egress height. I'm trying to see here. I mean, there are three rooms that have closets in the plan that I have, which would appear to indicate bedrooms.
Well, the-
Trying to read this, is that the current plan?
The woman who spoke before probably knows better than we do, because we weren't there, but I do believe that the former owner had, I think, a family member, someone living there illegally, so I'm not sure what they used, they must have had at least one bedroom down there. But that's not our intention.
What is the intention for those rooms with closets?
Well, the, as I said, we'd like to have one bedroom down there, but we just, the, what we found in market demand, and, and as I said, the one woman, the woman that lives here now has a daughter, so she's a single adult, she'd only require one bedroom, but there, even if these tenants move at some point, and there's another family comes in, they're just happy to have the extra space, so they, I, we don't have a huge set of data points, but the other family that we do this with, they're happy to just let their kids go down and play, and have a TV room and stereo room, whatever.
Yeah, were you done for right now? You guys will get to come back up, certainly, if you have anything.
Whatever, whatever you'd like.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you had any, we were kind of asking questions, vowing, but if you had any more statement, then-
No, that's all, thanks.
Okay, we'll certainly give you guys the last. Yes, Ms. Booker?
Thank you, I just had two more questions. There is a catch basin in the back there, so I assume the reason for the five-foot extension would be to not go over the catch basin, but then I, you know, I don't know exactly what the footage there involves, but there is a catch basin back there.
I presume, I presume not, and certainly, they would have to work that out with the city building department.
And also, is the plan to tear down the back porches on the first and second floor, and replace it with the bedrooms that would be the addition to the house?
They can certainly clarify, but my understanding, yes, is to take off the
There and rebuild.
existing, what's there, and rebuild entirely.
Okay, and that would make it three bedrooms on the first floor, plus whatever's in the basement, because there's two bedrooms there now, so that would make it three plus whatever.
Yes, exactly, it would be three bedrooms on the first floor, if that seems to be clear.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Was there anyone else from the public? I think we got everyone from the public who wished to speak with us. I'm going to throw out there, just because it may involve some comment from, from the applicant. I think that the, sort of the extension within the, a non-conforming, an extension within a non-conforming setback is a very common issue that we deal with. I am very hung up over kind of the stair coming off the back, though, as a part of that. So that's, I guess where I'm sitting right now is, for me, it would have to be a, for me, it would have to be a condition that that be moved inside.
Would they have to come back for additional clearance to enclose the staircase if they wanted to maintain the-
I don't know if they could literally enclose it in its current scenario. I'm thinking more like, look at another way to get to the basement as a connecting stair, so that you can put the official egress stair, you know, like, so this would become the official egress stair. The only thing that makes this not able to be the official egress stair in this corner is the duplexing aspect of the basement, so, and there's even a little bit more space in terms of lot coverage, if this needed to be slightly larger to accommodate a stair built inside. I just, I'm not comfortable with the situation of the exterior stair as part of the non-conforming use.
One point to note, that with the current size of the stairwell, if it were to be enclosed, it would be roughly 2% over the maximum building lot coverage?
So, forgive me, it's hard for me to imagine architectural things sometimes in my head. So, what you're proposing, Lori, is a condition where the current interior staircase would become potentially the egress stairs for all three, and that they would reconfigure the first floor and the basement plans to allow for another interior stairwell to duplex the basement?
Yeah, either allow for another interior stair for that duplex, or reprogram the basement in some way, but I'm just not comfortable with the situation.
I noticed somewhere, let me see where I saw it, in the spark notes, maybe, oh, where'd they go? It seemed like there were a lot of, where did I see that? It made me a little bit more comfortable with what they were doing. Oh, it's in the spark notes, all right, I don't know what I did with them. Somebody else has another question, while I locate my- Oh, I, it's the, it's in the memo-
It's in the memo.
On the second page, the second paragraph, although you, although the, I'm quoting, although the use is entirely surrounded by the R2 Single Family Residential District, the property is located within a block and a half of a myriad of zoning districts, blah, 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 continue, continue. That made me a little bit, or that made, helped to make me comfortable with, you know, what they're up to, what they're doing. I don't know if that's of any comfort to you or not.
Not really, I mean, they're wholly within, not even like, on an adjacency to, like they're, right, clearly within the district.
I think there's certainly additional studies that could be asked of your architect. I think you could probably get additional efficiencies with getting the two stairs in-house, and still have a, this additional, you know, modest back bedroom, so.
That's why I didn't close the record, because I want-
So, you know, that's my, I applaud the effort of trying to extend affordable housing in Evanston, I think that's, you know, definitely commendable. I think, though, there are probably efficiencies in how this is laid out that could be going there.
Evi, come up.
Well, first of all, we, and we have done some work with Architect, and went over some different plans and things. And we felt that, you know, with the wood out there, you know, we're going to stain it and make it blend, you know, and that, that's less obtrusive than, you know, we could actually build the building out, one proposal he had is going out 10 feet, and having enclosed stairs, actually, that was an idea, and we said, no, we'd rather have it less obtrusive, which we felt was more, you know, green space or whatever, that, just having this out, this one stair coming down.
So can you speak a little bit to the, in the basement, if you have, you have two means of egress, and your windows are operable, I presume, so you have natural ventilation down there for the rooms that have closets?
Yes, it's actually very well done. The owner lived there, and so they really did a good job on it. I tend to, I don't know, with, with buildings, I tend to like to put egress windows in, in the, when we've done other ones, just because I think it's just a good practice, so everybody can always get out. So everybody can always get out. You know, I'm thinking like, what if kids in there and there's a fire? You know, I don't want to be the guy who is, seal them in. So that's something that we do. But, you know, truthfully, we always, we try, and one of the goals here is we try to rent to not a huge family, you know, just because it doesn't work out usually that well. Usually, a middle-sized family is the best. And a lot of kids, like Ms. Terrell, her grandson plays the drums. So he'll probably, you know, right now it's in her living room, but maybe they'll have that downstairs. Similar things to what we all have at our houses or apartments. So I don't know if that answers your question.
So in terms of when you bought this as an investment property, you, you included the income of the third bedroom, that back bedroom?
Well, yes, yes. We bought it as three bedrooms, two three-bedroom apartments, and that's our goal. Now, we, you know, presently, we certainly do like Ms. Terrell a lot. You know, I was over there yesterday and today. I go over there and see her a lot. So, so we, you know, she's definitely staying. And, you know, I don't know how I can convey that, but she is. And it'll be nice for her. And I think she has a large family in Evanston that own property in the neighborhood, or within a block, anyway. Her daughter lives there. And they come over and, understanding is that she needs somebody to take care of her. So that back bedroom will be used by one of, I don't know which one relative, but there's talk of different people, maybe her daughter, maybe somebody else.
I guess my condition for continuation and expansion of the non-conforming use, I think I've made it clear, like that would, I, I guess I'm just not. That's where I sit, so, okay. That would be my condition.
Can I answer one?
Sure.
Try to address Ms. Weinberg's question. The, first of all, when we bought it, we did expect it to be three bedrooms. That's what, it was a three-bedroom voucher for that tenant. The second-floor tenant was a bad tenant. We had to evict and they're gone. And, but it's the same unit on the second floor, same layout. So we expected that to be a three-bedroom. We did not expect it to be a big problem to improve the bedroom, you know, to enlarge. We're just, it, it does look, from the outside, like it was a back porch that was converted. And we're going to make it a much nicer rear of the building and a much nicer interior, you know. So the tenants that are there are very happy and excited about this. So we didn't anticipate that it would be, we didn't look into the legalities of it being a conform, non-conforming legal building. So, so to answer your question about what we thought when we bought it, we were expecting it to be three-bedroom. And we thought, okay, we can put in this much money and make these rooms nice. And that's where we're at.
Certainly, all I'm saying is, the existing bedroom is somewhere around, I don't know, maybe 100 square feet, lightly over.
The existing bedroom is, I don't, I don't think it's.
Currently, it has HVAC system. And, and there's a closet in the upstairs bedroom that has the, that. And, and then it has a large closet that should be in there. I don't know.
But if you have, if you have the plans, I'm sure whatever the architect.
It had to be a legal bedroom for it to get credit.
Whatever, yes, there is.
It's just a little narrow.
And so now, certainly, you're making it better. You're proposing to make it better.
Right, and not huge, I don't think.
No, but more generous.
Yes.
Seems like there still could be a way of getting both stairs and providing yet still a modest room. You know, somewhere.
Well, it's only 11 by 11 now, you know, with that, and the new thing, which is, matches the other two rooms. So we don't feel like, anything smaller than that is like, oh, my gosh, that's a bedroom.
It's gonna be at least 12. It's a 13-foot addition.
I'm not so sure.
Well, that's what your plans say.
Yeah, maybe 12 by 11.
But still, even, even a 12 by 11 is.
What's the exterior construction gonna be, stud frame?
Yes.
Yeah, with, yeah, with cement siding. We, we really like that because it's, we paint that and it's, it's nice looking. It's that, you know.
So it could be a 12 and a half.
Lap siding.
It could be, if it's a, if it, it's really a 13-foot addition, it could be a 12 and a half foot room. Approximately.
Right, I'm not sure, I'm not looking at that.
We don't have the plans, we don't remember our exact size, but it's somewhere.
We're making six-inch wall. I like the little thicker two-by-fours or.
Yeah, no, but that's why.
But even, even so, if it's 12 by 11 or, that's, that's not a huge bedroom if you walk it off and think about it.
No, it's, but it's, it is bigger than the other two bedrooms.
By not much, though. It's pretty.
No, and I'm not saying we're, I'm not saying we're talking gargantuan here. I'm just saying, it is what it is on the plan. It's, it's, it's certainly within the realm, slightly larger than, you know, not a lot, but slightly larger than the other space.
If it was an issue that, you know, was a, broke the camel's back and you said, well, gee, if you made it four foot instead of five foot and that bedroom was 11 foot or, you know, change that we could live with that, it's still gonna be a much more attractive bedroom to a potential tenant. As far as doing the staircase and, and having it all internal without having that new addition bigger, the problem is that the first floor and the, it's a, will be, it's a duplex. So it'll be a private space. You can't have people that are upstairs walking, you know, into.
No, that's why, I understand that, I need, I understand the need to separate the stair.
Okay.
I get that and/or program it differently. I mean, if you program it as like common laundry room, blah, 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 then it doesn't, then it just, it's an egress stair and it doesn't matter. If you program it as extra space for the first floor, then I get the fire separation issue that we need to address here. I, I feel like it's doable somehow. I'm just, I'm not comfortable with a considerate non-conforming kind of aspect into it, so.
Yeah, well, we did look at it the other way, but we thought, we didn't want to go back 10 feet. You know, to have our addition bigger. We just thought like, okay, well, we'll just, you know.
I think what's being suggested is not going 10 feet to accommodate more, even more space and stair, but rather using the five feet and reprogramming the way you're using it to try to address the stairs in a different way.
I mean, the, there's a lot of stair space there. So that definitely could be a full egress stair in that corner. And then maybe there's a smaller area that just makes the connection stair to, you know.
Right, I don't think that's possible. I, we, we looked at that. And basically, you know, obviously, people don't want other people going through their unit. We're trying to get rid of the three apartments.
And you can't even, it's not even allowed. You can't even, so that's a non-issue.
So with that, you know, even if we took a foot off the bedroom, the stair, stairway is actually, because when they go down, we didn't really want to have a spiral staircase for people's main egress. It just doesn't, it just doesn't work. It's not enough room. We've really pushed this thing in. Before, the guy had it out 10 feet and had an interior staircase idea. And we said, no, we want to be more modest. We want to keep in with the neighborhood. We're gonna make this, you know, just a small staircase that's staying natural to look like your picnic table or something, you know. You know, so we, we have looked at that as an option.
So just rough calculations and, you know, certainly for you guys to review. But you could just change it so that one stair comes off and the direction is, I guess, one's east and bottom, top is east and bottom is west. There's room. You can subtract out your 44-inch minimum stair. You can still have an eight-foot wide room, potentially as long as 12, 12 feet wide, and still have your other entrance to your other stair to the top or bottom at the, at the other side.
Right, yes. We did look at that because if we went straight out, we could have gone, we could go straight out, but then it sticks way out in the yard. And right now, it bends around. You know, like we, one guy said, oh, well, you could go out. And I said, I don't really want to go out 15 feet straight out in the backyard. Right, because you are pretty high up. You gotta.
No, I'm just saying, overlap yourselves on the back.
Oh, like that?
And then sort of wrap the bedroom around your stairs. And you can still get roughly 100 square foot bedroom.
You mean, just go straight out?
No. But that's for you and Mr. Villanueva to figure out.
Yeah, we couldn't figure it out in our architect, yeah.
Yeah. Are you an architect? Maybe you, okay.
Yeah, right.
You sound like you have a better vision to hire you.
And I know, Alan, you can do better.
Getting free advice here.
Okay, great. Yeah, right, well.
We're not opposed to trying to reconfigure the stairway.
Yeah, right, I just couldn't figure out how.
We, that's what our architect, that was his best vision. But if there's something better, you know, that doesn't cost a fortune, we're open. And so, that's fine.
Yeah, he, he's got an answer for you.
Okay.
He can find it for you.
So.
So what?
So, I don't, if Claire, if Claire's in my ballpark. Are you in my ballpark, Claire?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, then, if Claire's in my ballpark, then I'm gonna kind of throw it at you this way. I have a sense that you might be able to get enough votes for approval tonight if we conditioned you on putting the staircase inside and maintaining underneath the allowable impervious, or, am I saying the wrong thing? Impervious is.
Building lot coverage, I think, was the trouble.
Building lot coverage is what's defining us here, and staying within the building lot coverage. Otherwise, you will not get approval. You may, you can carry over and see if you get approval from the, you know, from another, a fourth vote from another board member. But, or you can, you can continue and look at this with your architect and get back to us and show us.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If, if we say fine, we can accept the approval condition on getting the stairway this, and we somehow, for some reason, can't find a way to get the stairway, is there a way for us to come back and say, look, we've tried every way and meet with Melissa?
We'd probably drop it and then Villanueva, right?
Is there any, I'm not expecting that to happen. I'm just want to know if it kills the deal.
We can put any kind of condition on there we want, can't we? Aren't we, I, I think we may be better off continuing and looking at a plan that conforms to what we would require.
Yeah, if, if it doesn't work, then we'll say, oh, let's not do it.
We'll just.
And then we'll come back to you and re-put a new thing. So we accept.
We'll accept the approval condition on the stairway.
Right.
I trust Ms. Weinberg.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, and I think what we're going to say is that, or what my inclination to say is that you will maintain the sides of the building as you're currently proposing and that you will stay within the building lot coverage, which will.
Yes, we would do that.
Oh, I don't know if you guys are uncomfortable with this. It gives them a wee bit of flexibility on their depth.
That's what I was gonna ask, is that, you're giving them a little bit of wiggle room now if they stay side yard setbacks?
Think about that.
That's fine with me.
It gives them a little bit of wiggle room with that depth.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, that's.
I, I know that, I'm sure Melissa can explain it a lot more detailed. But.
Okay.
Okay.
Essentially, what I'm saying gives you a wee little wiggle room in terms of that wall.
Okay, thank you very much, I think.
I think we've negotiated ourselves into a corner here. Anything, Melissa, before we continue? You looked like you had something to say.
You'd have roughly 40 square feet additional that you could enclose to make the stairs work.
Okay, I, you know, I'm sure that the architect will be able to make it work.
Okay. Matt, would you like to make a motion? Oh, sorry. Sorry, I knew there was gonna be negotiation there, so I wanted to, all right. We will close, we will close our record. We've basically had most of our deliberations. Actually, we'll, we're gonna run through really quickly here. And. Look at this. We are, it's still a major variation, the non-conforming aspect of it. It falls into the major variation side of it. Okay, just wanted to make sure that we're following the same standards there. And doing this within the confines of the discussion that we've just had and the conditions that we've discussed. Standard one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of the adjoining properties. I think that this is in, within the kind of normal range of, as I said earlier, kind of improvement to various properties, staying underneath our coverage allowances that are established by the district and at the same time allowing us to maintain the typical side setbacks, which are, which are often, often at issue. And given our condition with respect to the stair that this standard has been met. Stair number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. This is a somewhat unusual case in terms of the kind of non-conforming use, although there are several other non-conforming uses in the immediate area. And we are reducing number of units and getting certainly closer to the two conformance with the zoning district. So I believe the standard has been met as well. Stair number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. Again, situation, situation in terms of the setback that we are really trying to get accommodated as well as reviewing the more unusual situation of having these kind of non-conforming, so many sort of, these non-conforming situations within this district. So I believe the standard is met as well. Stair number four, the property owner would suffer particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. The strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. The stricter regular, letter of the regulations limit the property owner from any improvement of the structure because of its non-conforming aspect. So certainly, review and, review by this body is required to, to go forward. And no help from this body to be able to improve the property would certainly be more than a mere inconvenience. Stair number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. While the current owners do rent the property, it is, has been noted that it is affordable housing in, in the neighborhood and they are certainly trying to improve the standards of the conditions in that building. And they own several properties within the city of Evanston. And it seems that they are certainly looking to add to the public benefit to the city as a whole. So I believe the standard has been met. Stair number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. The, certainly, the location of the existing side yard setback has been well-established for a very long time as well as the existing condition of the, the too flat and indeed the three, sort of three-flat aspect of it precede the current owners. So the standard has been met as well. Stair number seven, the alleged variation is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty which affects the property. And I believe through our discussion, we have certainly. And I believe through our discussion, we have certainly attained that as well. So, I believe the standard has been met. And with that, do we have a motion and condition?
In the matter of 13 ZMJV 0040 regarding 2018 Lake Street, I move that we grant the zoning relief requested for the expansion of a non-conforming use of a non-compliant structure, and also the request for a side yard setback variance with the following conditions: that the egress stairs be contained within the envelope of the building, that the property development remain under the, under the building lot coverage required by the zoning ordinance, that there be no kitchen in the basement, and we are granting a 13-foot addition onto the rear of the property, continuing the east and west walls back by 13 feet. And that construction and development be in compliance with the documents submitted and the testimony this evening.
I second the motion.
I'm just trying to think of how to word the, just as a point of clarification, we were trying to see about doing, allowing them to go a little bit, as long as they maintain the sides, they could go to, a little bit further if they had to, to make it work, as long as they stayed underneath the building lot coverage.
Yeah, if they've only got 40 extra square feet and they're going 13, they aren't going to be able to go a lot further.
No, I didn't, I said, I said we were only giving them wiggle room, but...
But the thing is, I'm concerned if we state it simply as a under lot coverage, that gives them too much wiggle room to reconfigure the space.
That's kind of not how I understood it. I understood from Melissa that to stay under the lot coverage, it only gave them 40 additional square feet, right?
It would give them an additional 40 square feet to add on to what they're currently proposing, but if you add in the condition of, within substantial compliance, that limits them to a similar design, so that they can't have it stick way out.
It would have to maintain the, it would have to maintain, they have to maintain both the east and west...
Correct.
...setbacks. That would, that's kind of part of what we're saying.
But...
So, if they maintain that and only have that many feet, then there's only so different it can be.
I like the challenge for an architect.
So...
So, the most they could go out is roughly two feet. I mean, because it's like, it's five foot wide if it's 40. Not even two feet.
Okay.
Maybe a foot.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm not happy with the motion unless we take out the 13 thing and just leave it as the, be in compliance substantially and not, not exceed building lot coverage. So, I thought that's, I, that's how I understood where we, where we ended up, I guess.
Well, I was willing to move along with the negotiation based on the fact that I thought we were doing only 13 feet back.
Okay.
And I want, I want to hold them to a very specific plan since we do not have a plan in front of us. So, I want them to keep the walls...
I agree.
...as proposed.
I, I agree with that.
Okay. There is a motion, and it has been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried unanimously. And good luck with your architect. Next on the agenda, while we clean up our paperwork here, I'm sorry, sir.
Can I just ask one question because you kind of lost me at the end there?
Sorry.
The, as you proposed or changed, approved it, does that, does our proposal, Melissa, fit within the guidelines that they just said was, you know, they approved? I, I know that, not the stairs, not the, I don't mean that. If we enclose the stairs...
Yeah, the rest of your, like, your envelope, basically, your existing envelope that you're proposing is exactly what he just approved.
Okay, fine. I did.
Yeah.
You lost me in the technicalities, but that's okay. Thank you.
Your, your existing...
But it's not a matter of enclosing the stairs that are proposed. You have, your architect needs to redesign them to be...
I know, we have to reconfigure. Yes, yes, I understand.
They changed it so you can only go back the same amount that we went back before. It was going to be you could go back farther in one little area for the stairs.
Okay, we can work on it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. While we do move on here, let's see, we have 1907 Central Street, and when you're ready, Melissa, you can read that in.
D'Wali Backman Holdings Corporation, Lussi, applies for a special use permit for a type two restaurant, Leonidas Chocolate Cafe, at 1907 Central Street. 1907 Central Street is located in the B1A Business District and the OCSC Central Street Corridor Overlay District, which requires a special use permit for type two restaurants to operate. Zoning code section 6953. The zoning board of appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case. Documents on file for the case include special use application submitted April 22, 2013, zoning analysis, standards, plot of survey dated May 27, 1992, store layout plans, business description, letter of concern, images of property, aerial view of property, zoning map, and spark draft meeting minutes of May 15, 2013.
Okay, and do we have the applicant come up? And at the same time here, I'm going to swear in anyone else who wishes to speak with us regarding this case. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
And feel free to pull down the mic there so that we can hear you. And if you could give us your name and address before we get started.
Okay, my name is Marie Doye. I am from Glencoe 425 Woodland Avenue. And currently, we, we have three stores, and one of them in Wilmatt, and we are wishing to close Wilmatt and relocate on Central Street in Evanston.
Okay, and you said you had three current locations?
Mm-hmm.
And, but none of those are in Evanston at this time?
No.
Okay. And can you briefly describe to us maybe some of the, some of the things you're going to sell, like, is this mostly, is, do you expect it to be mostly kind of a carryout sort of situation, or what's, maybe just, so we can understand your business model a little bit better?
Well, it is, it is a cafe. It's not a straight chocolate store, but 50% of our business is really a gift. So, people come to our store to buy ballot tons of chocolate. So, but the other 50 is really everything from espresso, ice cream, waffles, crepes, and gift items like French cookies and French candies. It's all about European food, sweets most, and pastry as well. So, so, so chocolate is, is made in Belgium, Brussels, and Leonidas have been in business for, have been making chocolate for 100 years. And we have been in Wilmatt for nine years, almost nine years, and we have outgrown our space. We are looking for a bigger and better space, and we, we found it on Central.
And how many employees do you expect to have in there at your busiest time?
You know, it's, you know, our business is very seasonal, so it, it can, you know, between three and six, sometimes seven. We do a lot of shipping as well.
I understand there's parking at the rear of the building. Will that be available for any of your employees that do need to park?
Yes.
Could you describe the food café service that will take place inside the store?
Um, pastry, like, you know, éclairs, croissants, mostly French, European pastry.
Disposable...
No.
Dishes, disposable silverware?
No. No, I would not serve seven or eight dollars a tart in a paper plate. So, real dishes and disposable for only to-go crepes and waffles, so if somebody wants croissant to go, of course. But everything else is in real mugs and cups and teapots and teacups. It's really important to us, to me. So, no styrofoam.
And it looks like, it looks like you will have space for your trash as well out in the rear of the building? And how, do you expect that you'll be able to get deliveries from the rear of the building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, so there will be two doors in the back, one, one on the side of the building where we'll get our food deliveries and chocolate and milk and supplies.
You said this, did you say the side?
Side.
Okay, so you'll, there will be, there's access at the side. Okay. And are you also aware of the city's litter collection plan?
Yes, I've read about it, and we are, we're all okay.
Okay.
I mean, absolutely.
Okay. And what were your proposed hours of operation?
Um, between, we are thinking six, again, seasonal, summer hours will be longer than winter, but to be, you know, six to eight Monday through Wednesday, six to nine or even 10 on Saturday, Friday, Sunday, nine to six.
Just because one of our standards is about kind of conformance with other stuff related to the city, Melissa, can you maybe, we have a couple of emails in here. I'm not sure where they were in the packet, sorry, guys, but somewhere, somewhere in here. I came across a couple of emails that seem to be concerned about the actual building itself. Are we, do we have any issues in terms of its, do we have any issues in terms of its conformance and everything in terms of the standard of complying with all the applicable regulations and laws?
I'm not aware of any zoning violations. There may or may not be property standards or building code issues. I'm, I'm not aware of any.
Street? Just for the record, I'll note there does not appear to be anyone else from the public who wishes to speak with us on this matter. I'm sorry, did I miss you? Sorry, ma'am. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Margie Anderson, 2647 Broadway. I'm like a block and a half away.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
A question I have for that particular tenant property, how many employees' parking spots in the back of the building are allotted for you?
Two.
Two. So, you're going to have four to six employees? So, there'll be additional cars that'll need to be parked?
You know, most of them...
Actually, if we could get you up onto one of the microphones, either share that or grab this one from Dennis.
Well, most, most of my employees are young, and they do not own cars. So, a lot will be Evanston students, Northwestern, so they use a bike or take a train.
Or Northwestern, they'll take the bus, probably. Okay, okay. And then the second thing is, what did I have? I had two questions. Oh, the delivery truck, does the truck go in the back of the building?
No.
So, it parks either on Central Street or on Green Bay?
On Green Bay.
So, it'll park, double park on Green Bay for a delivery?
Mm-hmm.
And is that in compliance? I don't know for deliveries. Is it UPS that delivers to you, or is it Cisco, like...
Cisco, UPS, FedEx, and they all do that. They cannot, they cannot get to the back of the building because...
Yeah, because it's really, really narrow.
That's for deliveries and shipments. I thought I saw you do a shipping business as well, right? So, how many times a day should, do you expect to have a delivery truck picking up or delivering?
You know, it depends. I mean, deliveries will be maybe, food delivery is for sure, three to five times a week. Packaging, FedEx deliveries, FedEx pickup, milk delivery, chocolate delivery, you know, so it just depends. So, there is also a FedEx store very near the store, so, you know, we, we are even thinking to get a cart and have some of our employees run to FedEx because it's really important for us for our chocolate not to melt in the truck. So, like, right now, we do not like to, we, we drive our own shipments to FedEx because we do not want chocolate to be in the FedEx truck for five hours in the afternoon. So, it's totally possible that we will even walk the packages to FedEx. It's almost walking them.
Where do currently the puppy store take deliveries? Do you know? There's a, on the block, you know, there's Prairie Joe's, and around the corner, there's the puppy shop. So, they must have deliveries made. I'm wondering, do they go to the back of the building, or do they double park on Prairie? Because I'm just looking at congestion on Green Bay of double parking.
Not aware of where they take the...
Yeah.
I don't know how the puppy store takes its stuff, but that's actually, it's quite a ways down. It's not even really right by Green Bay.
It's around the corner.
Yeah.
But it would be in that building. It's in that building, I believe.
It's on that block.
Yeah, right. Okay, I'm just bringing up that it might be a traffic jam tie-up that we should look at the ordinance for deliveries on Green Bay. Thank you.
If I could add, I'm not aware of particular delivery problems in that immediate part of Central Street. There may be an occasional issue, but certainly the circumstance for this business is not dissimilar from businesses that already exist in terms of how they would receive deliveries, and the fact that your outbound shipping you'll handle directly is a big plus.
Can we, are we allowed to condition deliveries to not play, take place during the rush hour? It seems like parking on Green Bay Road during the rush hour would be problematic if there was a truck blocking that lane.
Yes, we can. I mean, obviously, people like FedEx, I mean, they park illegally everywhere, anytime they want, in any city they want. So, we can condition as much as we want, but they're going to do whatever they want. But, but yes, within the reason, within the realm... But, but yes, within the reason, within the realm of the, of the types of deliveries that the owner can schedule, then yes, we, we can condition that.
Yes, and it's, it, it makes sense even for us to, you know, to have our food deliveries. We get them very early in the morning.
You know, if they're, if they're trying to get business during the rush hour, they probably don't want to take a delivery anyway, right?
I, I also would be very hesitant to condition the approval of double parking, which by saying you can have double parking on Green Bay and non-rush hours-
I don't think we're approving double parking-
No, but that's, that's what we're implying.
I think we're saying that deliveries should only occur between certain time periods.
We can't create new traffic laws here, so.
Right.
But we, we can condition when deliveries are scheduled to take place.
I mean, so it would be to do it on Central, which would be-
I'm really, I am-
A big mess as well, even a bigger mess, because you have parked cars all, you know, and I, I don't know where the truck would stand, so.
Just to make sure I'm not getting confused, our main frontage is on Central, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So-
Yeah, I, I know, I was just-
There's that whole row-
There were pictures of Green Bay and I-
There's that whole row of metered parking that's Tony and what's this and, and all of that that doesn't get busy until after, because it's metered, you know, you can't, you can't commute, commuters can't park there. You know, basically the whole row of meters in front of them, it doesn't get busy till 10 or 11 once shopping cranks up on Central Street anyway. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I, I think I agree with the comment that Mr. Perrin, Perrin made, Perrin made, sorry, sorry. That there's plenty of businesses of this type on Central Street and they all seem to get their deliveries and we would hear about it if it was a huge issue. Or we would have heard about it.
I guess just to, just to go back to the one comment about public comment, we are, we did get everybody, right? Double checking, okay, good. So we have gotten all of our public comments in. There any other questions of the applicant? I think we've covered most of our information regarding employees, deliveries. We can discuss in detail maybe deliveries a little bit more. And then we've got hours. Seems not that dissimilar from the kind of six to 10 and then six to 11 that you did the other day. So I would be fine with that as well. That was Friday and Saturday, yeah. Okay, anything further before we close the record? Do you have anything else you wish to say before we close the record?
No, just thank you.
Okay, thank you. That we will close the record and begin our deliberations. Is there any further discussion in terms of deliveries and potential conditions? Thinking just leave it without hourly conditions, okay.
It'll be a good challenge, the Evanston Parking Enforcement people.
Okay. With that, we will review the standards as we are recommending to the City Council on the special use.
Sorry, I do think, um, as we consider the standards, I do think we ought to be considering what we typically do, which is not allowing employees to take up the metered parking on Central Street or I guess back behind the train also, which is another sort of demanding on the other side of Central, on the other side of Green Bay, right opposite this corner.
That's a little bit harder.
There are two spots in the back and the owner or applicant said she believes that will accommodate. And I feel strongly that that's a very hard area to find parking spaces in and don't think that, I, I think we typically condition these things this way.
Yeah, I, I, what I was trying to just figure out, and I think Matt might have the answer for me here, was whether or not, assuming you hit that limit and you had a third person, what's the, I was trying to understand what the alternative was, given the fact that the parking over on Poplar is quasi, it's quasi-on-street, quasi-off-street, but you have some-
In, in the spark, in the spark minutes, they noted that there is a city lot two and a half blocks west of the store.
West of the store?
Yeah, I'm not particularly familiar with-
I think they're referring probably to the lot that's across from Starbucks, further down Central Street.
Yeah, it's near Foodstuffs and the park.
On the other side, west of, just west of the park there.
Yes.
It's principally a metered lot, there are some permits in there as well. Okay.
So there is a solution for off-street parking condition if you get to person number three. Okay. All right. Then, that being said, then I am comfortable with the off-street parking provision for employees. And just to clarify, we were seeing, uh, quickly that the hourly condition we thought was similar to a condition that we recently had in which, uh, for relatively similar use in a relatively relatable area, in which case the hours were 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and then 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Friday, Saturday, as our outliers. Okay, and then we will go through the standards for special use. And the first being that the request of special use is on the list of special uses listed in the zoning ordinance for the district in which it is located. And indeed, uh, this is allowable special use within the Central Street Corridor overlay district. Standard two, the requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the Conference of General Plan and the zoning ordinance. The proposed, uh, business is certainly with, in keeping with the realm of businesses that is anticipated and hoped for along the Central Street corridor. And, uh, so from that standpoint, I believe this standard has been met. Standard number three, their special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. There are somewhat similar, uh, special uses in the area, although not distinctly exactly the same. But it does not seem that, uh, the addition of this, uh, special use in this location will be of any, uh, negative cumu, will create any negative cumulative effect with respect to those other uses. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. It is an existing building, an existing building and maintaining lease, lease in that building. And furthermore, uh, tenant who has several locations in the area and has stayed at them, uh, for quite a while and certainly, um, getting a tenant in there that we can maintain is, uh, certainly an increase and a benefit to property values. I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number five, the requested special use can be adequately served by public facilities and services. This is, um, an existing location and has been noted, has, um, several other restaurants and other cafes within the area. And, uh, there's been no indication from staff that there will be any issue serving this location. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number six, the request of special use does not cause undue traffic congestion. We talked about this some and it will certainly, um, be somewhat of an effort on the applicant's part to coordinate deliveries, but is also within, uh, the applicant's interest to make that run as smoothly as possible in the interest of their time. Furthermore, in terms of, uh, the patrons, uh, we note that, um, there's a significant amount of foot traffic and the location with respect to, um, the metro station there would certainly imply a significant amount of foot traffic from that as well. So while, uh, it will bring certainly more people to that corner, it does not appear that it will create undue traffic congestion. Standard number seven, the request of special use preserves significant historical and architectural resources. I don't know that it's, we haven't really spoken about, uh, the significance of the building it's in, but, um, it is in, within an existing, uh, building and, um, will be maintaining that. And we have, uh, no further information with respect to, um, there being any changes to the facade that, that would, uh, impede the preservation of that. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number eight, the request of special use preserves significant natural and environmental resources. Again, this is an existing, uh, existing, uh, building that we're, um, just going into the interior of, so, uh, the standard, uh, seems somewhat not applicable and certainly has been met. Standard number nine, the request of special use complies with all the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances except to the extent such regulations have been modified through the plan development process. As per discussion with staff, certainly if there are any, uh, building issues, maintenance issues with the, um, building landlord as a whole, those can, um, be brought through, uh, property maintenance. But with respect to the actual special use, um, it seems that it is in compliance with all other applicable regulations, uh, that apply to it. And with that, we've run through the standards and discussed conditions. Is there a motion regarding this case?
I would move in the matter of 13ZMJV0039 regarding 1907 Central Street that we recommend approval of a special use permit for a type-two restaurant with the conditions that, uh, the applicant pay particular attention and enforce the litter collection plan from the city and also pay attention to the garbage collection plan, that any employee parking be either in leased spaces behind the building, in the city lot, which is located nearby, or in some other off-street location, but no parking on city streets. The hours of operation would be 6:00 AM till 10:00 PM, uh, Sunday through Thursday, and 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday evenings.
I second the motion.
The motion has been made and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And the motion is carried, so you'll continue on to City Council. You guys will sit. Moving on to our next agenda item, we have 1929 Noise Street. And if you could read that in, Melissa, when you're ready?
Randolph Lee Belt Architect applies for major zoning relief to retain an illegally constructed second-story addition. The applicant requests a front yard setback of 19.1 feet where 27 feet is required, zoning code section 6828A1, and a street-side yard setback of 4.5 feet where 15 feet is required, zoning code section 6828A2. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents on file for the case include variance application submitted April 16th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated February 22nd, 2013, site plans and elevations, image of property as built with addition, aerial map, zoning map of property, and spark meeting minutes of May 8th, 2013. And if I could note that, following the May 2nd to 2013 publication of the variance requests, further review of the documents on file determined the second-story addition to be compliant with the required 27-foot front yard setback. The only variance needed is the 4.5-foot street-side yard setback. And the elimination of this front yard variance request does not affect the legality of the request for the street-side yard setback variance or the public hearing notice.
Because we're asking for a lesser amount of relief.
Correct.
All righty, if I could swear in anyone who wishes to speak with us regarding the matter of 1929 Noise Street, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And is it Mr. Lee Belt?
Yes, I'm Randolph Lee Belt.
If you could give us your name and address, please, sir.
I'm Randolph Lee Belt, I'm at 900 North Shore Drive in Lake Bluff.
Thank you. And maybe you could describe to us a little bit further?
This is a rather unique project that I've been encountered with here. I could give you a quick timeline of how I got involved and what the development was on this. The previous owners left the house to the bank in roughly in June of 2012 and it was in receivership, uh, a few years before that. Hence, the bank, uh, got the house from the previous owners and the bank wanted to put it on the market. Once it went on the market, the realtor found out that a buyer was interested. And, uh, then we, um, discovered that it was an illegal second-story addition on there. So we went to the Building Department to find out what we, uh, were encountering and they asked us to come in front of the board to present our case. And here we are today. We did look at some other issues and that was, uh, what are we going to do with this project? One is, of course, we are asking for the relief. But other issues came up and saying, well, should we tear it down, the second story? That really wasn't practical due to the expenses of it and, um, the bank really didn't want to proceed with that. The other thing was to tear down the whole house then and rebuild. They didn't want to go in that direction. And then the other alternative was to leave it empty and keep it off the market. But the bank does want to put it back on the market. It will help the neighborhood and get this economy back up and running.
And this, um, would I be overpresuming if I came to the understanding that, um, you and/or the city has looked at this addition and confirmed that it would be acceptable to the city to keep it in place from a building permit standpoint?
They would want to bring it up to code.
Okay.
So we would then, uh, proceed with going through the house and identifying things that possibly are not to code and then, uh, putting a price tag on that and then doing the work and bringing it to code with inspections.
Okay. But is your expectation that the general shape and structure of the addition would be able to stay in place?
Yes, as of now, it, it looks like it's structurally sound. Uh, it's been up there for about eight years now, there are no cracks, there are no-
That was gonna be my other question was how long, you, if you had an idea of how long it had been placed?
Approximately eight years. So, so basically the integrity of the structure, uh, there's no deformation in the, uh, floor joists, the roof rafters, no cracking in the drywall. So all in general purposes, it's held its time.
Okay.
What's the overall condition of the property? I'm, I'm, and the reason I'm asking, I'm sort of trying to ascertain, you know, when you talked about some other options, using, doing a tear-down, that sort of thing, is, is it overall in good shape? It's not a-
Correct, it's overall in very good shape, it's in moving condition.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know, thanks.
Okay, so you would be needing to deal with things like, I don't know- Okay. So you would be needing to deal with things like, I don't know, I'm presuming that if this is like a working fireplace, we don't have chimney height, those are the types of things that you guys would be looking to correct?
Correct. And that is one of the issues.
Okay.
Is the height of the chimney.
All right.
In relationship to the...
Out of the picture, that was just the thing that stood out immediately. Okay, got it. Interesting.
Maybe one thing I should point out, it's on a corner lot, so it's not impacted by too much of the neighbors viewing in that relationship.
And have you talked to the immediate neighbor at all about...
No, we did not.
Okay. All right. Were there any other questions for Mr. Lee Belt at this second?
I just want to clarify. So the part that is the addition in the image that we have...
Is this thing.
Right, okay.
Is the second story.
It's basically the entire second story, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong.
So it was like a former, like bungalow-type...
Yeah, my understanding is that it was a former bungalow, or it looks like, it seems that the window at the front, if you will, in the attic space was, is original.
Correct, and in the back.
The dormer, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, that's original.
So it looked very similar to the house next to it, the gray one in our picture?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood.
Any other questions for Mr. Lee Belt at the second?
Just a note for the zoning board, it is the belief that the way the addition was done and went unnoticed was that there was a permit for kitchen remodeling. But still...
A very, a very large kitchen on the second floor?
I am stunned.
I was stunned too, that, how it got through.
Anyways, is there anyone else, moving on, is there anyone else who wishes to speak with us regarding this matter at this time? Sir?
Hi, my name is Thomas Solomon, and I live across the street to two thousand and one Noise, just to the west.
Two thousand and one, okay, just to the west. Okay, I see. Thank you.
And so we moved in, I think, seven years ago, and it was, the house was in really, really bad shape when we moved in. It kind of looked like a crack house. So it was probably about seven years that the addition went up. And I guess, I have two things to add, just to be brief. One is, I think from a zoning point of view, it's fine. I mean, it kind of fits in with the, with the neighborhood. A second story on that street is not a big deal. And the fact that it's so close to the sidewalk is just a pre-existing condition of the, of the, the building. So I don't think they should be penalized for kind of the way the lot was set up. But the construction is, move-in might be a little bit generous. I mean, there were, there were people living there, but the, it was not done well. I mean, there's chunks of, there's a patch of roofing that's missing and the siding's kind of wavy. So I hope when the, when you work with the building department, it's, you know, brought up to code. And, you know, but we'd love to have neighbors.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. And did you sign up out front?
I did.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bob Taylor. I own and live in the home directly to the east of the property you're considering. That's at nineteen twenty-five Noise Street.
Okay.
And I'd like to make just a couple of comments.
Okay.
I, I support the variation for the, the zoning to allow the second-story addition to stand. I'd like to really suggest that the possible other code violations be checked on this property. I could never understand is this second-floor addition was going up, as to why it didn't seem to be getting inspections. And it concerns me, given the nature of some of the contractors who are working there, that there might be additional code violations. For example, on the east side of the house, under consideration tonight, facing my house, there's PVC pipe coming out of the bathroom. And occasionally, there's some type of fluids coming out of that. I don't know what that is about. But it doesn't seem to be a well-planned and permitted feature of the bathroom. There's also an air conditioning unit within two feet of the side property line, very close to my dining room window. So I don't know whether that came under permit also, but I just hope that when the work goes forward on this building, that the city will make sure that everything is brought up to code.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else who wishes to speak with us on this case? Mr. Lee Belt, do I understand correctly that the bank does intend to work with the city and that they would be acceptable of a condition that you guys work with the city on the code compliance of the structure as a condition of this approval?
Well, they will not give us a building permit then. We actually have to apply for a permit, even though it's built, and we have to go through the same course of action as if it was a new structure.
Okay.
So whatever the codes are, we have to deal with them.
Okay. Are there any other questions or issues at this time? All right. I think I've got the gist of it. Thank you, sir. With that, we will close the record and begin our deliberations.
Since the only thing we're talking about now is the side yard setback, and since it's essentially on the same footprint as the ground floor, which is legally non-conforming...
It does seem to be, yes.
Yeah. So if we were hearing this case for a request to add the second story, my, in my experience with this board, we would probably grant the variation, and I'd support it here. It seems like cutting off one's nose to spite one's face to ask them to remove it at this point.
Yeah, I hate the idea of, you know, throwing away already constructed. As much as I'm still flabbergasted that you could, you shouldn't be able to get away with that, let's put it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did.
Well, and we can certainly speak to this and the standards, but as well, we sort of, you know, have this kind of aspect of the, you know, benefit to the whole, to the whole area of, of kind of getting this to a point where we can work with it.
I, I agree, I agree.
I do generally, I'm not a huge fan of post facto considerations, but given the highly unusual situation, I mean, it's certainly not the current owner that created the post facto situation that we're considering.
Exactly. It's not like the owner that did the illegal addition is in here asking for forgiveness of having done it.
I also would like to note that this is one of the first times that it isn't in the hands of somebody else, who this was done three owners ago, and now we're having to address a third owner who all of a sudden has realized something is illegally constructed in their property, as is often the case.
Right, right.
Okay. And certainly, as I go through this, I'm doing so with the consideration of the, of bringing everything up to code and therefore, therefore it not being an issue for potentially the neighbors even, depending on what's happening with the plumbing upstairs. But anyways, we shall, we shall march through here. With considering the standards for a major variation, the requested major variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. The, it turns out that this addition has been there for quite a while. I don't know that the addition in and of itself has had any substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment of property, and use, enjoyment of property or the values. And it certainly seems that the proposed work here and the potential to get new, new owners into the property will positively impact those items. So I believe this standard has been met. Standard number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. As has been discussed, now that it is clear that the front setback has been maintained, the only issue that we are considering is the side yard setback. And has, has also been noted that it's an existing non-conforming condition, which is being maintained by carrying the bearing line down onto the side of the structure, which is certainly would be, I guess, not necessarily required, but certainly the most reasonable and, and minimally accepted way to handle such an addition. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property, both from a consideration of the fact that the, this is a corner lot with that short setback distance and existing non-conforming situation that is particular to this property, as well as the request, the request from an applicant who did not create the hardship together make this, this case unusual, but certainly the existing non-conforming aspect is the part that is peculiar to the property itself. Standard number four, their property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. The strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out currently. The property is owned by a bank, and they would certainly suffer more than just a mere inconvenience if they were required to bring the building back entirely to its previous state. As it is, they, they will be going through the effort to make sure the property is up to code. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. While the bank is looking to improve the property so that it can be sold, I think it's not exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income. They will, they obviously had a mortgage on the property and will be putting additional money into the property, and at this point, probably just trying to get it off their rolls, they may be losing money. But furthermore, it's certainly to the public benefit to get this property improved and, and on to new owners. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. As has been previously noted, this non-conformance was created by a previous owner, the current owner of the, as the bank had no knowledge of the non-conformance, even at the time that they took possession, and it's something that they are merely trying to correct. So I believe this standard has been met. Standard number seven, requested variation is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty, which affects the property as, again, as this is bearing down on the existing non-conforming exterior wall. It is, I believe, the minimum change necessary to allow for the second-floor addition. So I believe this standard has been met as well. And with that, is there a motion regarding the proposal for, for nineteen twenty-nine Noise?
I'll move in the matter of thirteen Z M J V dash zero zero three seven regarding nineteen twenty-nine Noise Street, that the zoning board approve the variation requested for a street-side yard setback of four and a half feet where fifteen feet is required, provided that the property be brought up to code. As has been represented, it will be on the record.
Second.
Would we need to make a motion to retain the illegality of the, of the structure, or is just the side yard setback enough?
I think it's legal, I think it's legal if we give the side yard setback.
Okay.
So I think we're good. All right. It's been moved in second, I believe. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
None.
With that, the motion is carried and you are approved. So good luck.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Yeah. All right. Moving on to our next case of the evening, which is twenty-one twelve Ewing Avenue. And if you would read that in when you're ready, Melissa?
Edmund Moran, Jr., attorney, applies for a family necessity variation to retain an illegally rented coach house. The applicant requests to eliminate conditions imposed on granted variance case Z A R oh one dash thirty-three dash M, to allow the coach house to be legally occupied and rented by persons who are not members of the family occupying the principal dwelling unit, zoning code section six three eight fourteen. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents on file for this case include variance application submitted April seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, standards form, certificate of zoning compliance with conditions from July nineteenth, two thousand and one, and zoning analysis of July nineteenth, two thousand and one, plat of survey dated February sixteenth, two thousand and twelve, site plans and elevations, public notices, map of concerned citizens' locations, public comments, image of property, zoning map of property. And additionally, prior to the meeting, all zoning members, zoning board members were given more recently submitted comments and an updated map of the locations for those who have commented thus far.
Okay. With that, if we could swear in anyone who wishes to speak with us this evening regarding twenty-one twelve Ewing Avenue? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Okay. And Mr. Moran, if you'd give us your full name and address before we proceed.
My name is Edmund Moran. My law office is at fifty-three West Jackson, Suite F eight fifty-seven in the city. I also live at twenty-five twenty-two Isabella Street here in Evanston.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe if you could describe to us the proposal here?
The proposal here, as stated in the introduction, relates to property at twenty-one twelve Ewing in the sixth ward. There are two buildings on the property. Frequently, one building is referred to as the principal residence, and the secondary building is referred to, generally speaking, is a coach house, a structure with a coach house in it, which also has two indoor parking spaces in it. So it acts in, in its physicality as a parking facility as well as having a coach house. The coach house originally was zoned for storage in the upper portions of the coach house, and ultimately, there's kind of an unusual, as you may have seen from the documents, kind of an unusual development path, in the sense that in two thousand and one, there was a variation granted for this property that allowed it to be built in the first place. In the wake of that action, the family that had resided in the building, which, which consisted of a husband and father, wife and mother, and two young daughters. One is Marguerite, who was currently a freshman at Evanston Township High School. The other is Hannah, who's ten and who's a fourth grader at Lincolnwood. who's 10 and who's a fourth grader at Lincolnwood. The mother is a woman by the name of Catherine Wood. And the applicant is an LLC whose sole member is her sister. And her sister is essentially through that LLC asking for the variation that we're requesting here tonight. The circumstances were that unfortunately, there was a breakup of the family while the family was living in this principal house. Ultimately, there was a divorce decree that was entered. Ms. Wood was given a judicial decree, so she became the title holder for the principal residence, as well as the rest of the property. Ultimately, because the husband was gone from the scene, which was, and the divorce was precipitated by quite difficult circumstances, delinquency in various respects, some abusive aspects of the household. The family was in, shall I say, a sensitive situation from a cohesive family standpoint. It became the intention of Ms. Catherine Wood, the mother, ex-wife, to retain this property so that there would be some stability with respect to ongoing time with the family, and particularly with her two daughters, Marguerite and Hannah. The sustainability of maintaining the mortgage payments on the property was thrown into great difficulty in the wake of the divorce. And to Catherine's benefit, her sister, who is basically the applicant through the LLC, came forward with her husband Noel Jackson. And if we could have the people who are here tonight stand up for just a second, Noel Jackson, Courtney Wood, who are the relatives, Hannah, who's a fourth grader, and Catherine, who are still living there and want to continue living there, are here tonight. The essential to take a lot of facts and boil them down to distilled essence is that they want to stay in this property. They want Hannah and Marguerite to have stability and to go forward. They want to get over the trauma of the family disruption. So Catherine's sister has stepped forward and with the help of her husband Noel Jackson, created this LLC and stepped in and bought the properties on 2112 Ewing, both of them, both the principal residence and the accessory building. The financing has worked out in such a way that the annual costs of renting these two structures out leaves a gap of about somewhat in excess of $700 a month, which Courtney is sustaining and paying so that the mortgage commitments can be, continue to be met. The house was, in fact, bought out of foreclosure. They literally came in at the last second. And before the house was to go up in auction, they redeemed it. So it came out of foreclosure proceedings and it's now stable. The complication that involves the ZBA is that even with that $750 gap, it only gets to that smaller gap if the coach house can be rented out to a family. The reality is, the coach house has in fact been occupied by a family for a considerable period of time. Originally, when there was a variance that was granted in 2001, that was the one that said that it was to be storage space. In effect, it became a residential space. The former husband, father, never filed a certificate of title with the Cook County Recorder. And the otherwise limitations to the storage as opposed to habitation were never noticed to people. And consequently, the space was in fact rented to someone at one point. What they are trying to do is to continue to legitimize the situation, hopefully with a positive action of the ZBA, in allowing them to have this space in the coach house rented, to continue to rent it, so that they can get some rent from that. That will make the payment on the lending, the loan that was needed to keep the property with the family sustainable. That's it in a nutshell. The, if this body agrees that that can be done and it grants the family necessity variation, you will be allowing a family that has gone through some hard times, but still has kids who want to live in the neighborhood. It's the only home they've ever known. They've never lived anywhere else. They go to the local school. They want to go continue to those schools and they want to stay there. The request, in fact, and I, let me just assert that the, insert that the zoning administration has offered to you a recommendation that you grant this variation. And I believe that was predicated upon the understanding that if this body were to take a positive stance on this, that it would allow the children and the mother to stay together, grow up in a stable environment, settled environment, and allow things to go forward. I would also insert here that there is a limited timeframe where this variation would, that we're asking for it to be in place. Hannah is in fourth grade. The plan and the hope is that Hannah and her sister, who's a freshman at the high school, both can complete their education in the public schools here and live in this environment presumably until they go on to bigger and better things, college and the rest of their lives. But they need this variation in order to realize that hope. So we would ask you to grant this variation so that the family can continue to live in this location, that the young women can go forward in a settled, stable environment, that they can enjoy the benefits of living here in the city of Evanston that we all enjoy. So in simple terms, that is our request. We hope that you will see a compelling story here for granting this application for, and I, I can't stop without saying that I can't imagine a better description for variation as being a family necessity variation. That is what this is all about. So I would also add that we've submitted to you documentation that has shown a survey of homeowners in the general area. There has been a fair amount of paper that I think you have with respect to that. I have tonight, and I think this may be somewhat out of time, but I would still ask the board to grant me the opportunity to present to you nine further petitions from neighbors who are endorsing this plan and our...
Written petitions, you said?
Other, other letters of support.
Okay. Could we have those?
Yes.
Just, just a moment. All right. It seems as a part of applicants, just for the record, I'll call it applicant say, since the applicant did turn it in, we have copies of letters, as well as an indication map of the location of these. And it looks like several of these were indeed directed to Melissa. So I'm noting that I think most of these are caught in our, in the revisions that Melissa has given us at the beginning of our meeting. But I'll pass that around just so everybody can see it.
I would also mention that the alderman of the sixth ward, Mark Tendem, is here tonight and has indicated to me previously his willingness to speak in favor of the variation application. And if the board would be willing to hear his remarks, I would definitely welcome that.
He is welcome to if he desires, certainly as we get to public comment. Thank you. Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Moran at this time?
See if my questions are addressed here, I believe.
Maybe somebody from staff can speak to this just a little bit. Having reviewed the standards for family necessity, which are indeed different than, or somewhat different than our normal standards for major variation, they actually just seem to be more like an abbreviated version of the standards for major variation. But I'm not seeing much language with respect to the family part. There doesn't seem to be a lot of, there doesn't seem to be much reference to sort of family necessity in the standards that I've got here. So I don't know if there's a, I don't know if there's been any, if there's anything further in the zoning code that we've missed that may help us understand how the, beyond just the title, family necessity, how that plays into our consideration.
The standards that you're referring to, those are all of the required standards for a family necessity variation. The only other mention of family necessity variations in the zoning ordinance that I'm aware of is where it discusses the, the types of family necessity variations that may be allowed. And specifically, it states that family necessity variations are subject to the procedures and standards set forth in Section 6387 and subsections 63812D of the zoning ordinance, respectively in order to, one, modify a residence to meet the special living needs of the disabled; two, modify a residence to provide space for an elderly parent to live with the family of his or her child; or three, modify a residence to accommodate a growing family or to alleviate an inconvenience.
So is, is it your contention, Mr. Moran, then, that this one fits within the modify in order to accommodate an inconvenience?
That's where I'd read it.
I, I, inconvenience doesn't, is a little underwhelming in terms of the factual circumstances that I presented to you here. But, but...
I wasn't suggesting that it was met to that. So I guess let me ask it open-ended. Which of those three conditions do you contend that the family necessity application fits under here?
Can you give me that again, Melissa?
One, modify a residence to meet the special living needs of the disabled; two, modify a residence to provide space for an elderly parent to live with the family of his or her child; or three, modify a residence to accommodate a growing family or to alleviate an inconvenience.
We have a growing family here. You have two young women, who are 15 and 10, who want to live here. If you grant them this family convenience variance, they will realize that wish. And if you don't, it will make it difficult for them to do that.
Do you know how long, Mr. Moran, this has, this has been rented out, this apartment, let's call it, above the coach house, on the second floor of the coach house?
In the initial phase, in the, in the wake of the 2001 variation, I'm not exactly sure. I think perhaps it was four or five years within that framework. And then going forward, pretty much from 2007, it was, it's been occupied by someone consistently.
So in the eight to nine year range at least?
Yes.
Is it, it's currently occupied by a tenant right now?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's, it's, I mean, it's in, in an unusual framework for the regulations that we're looking at, admittedly, that, but the plain fact of the matter is, if you allow this growing family, a family that continues to grow, to continue to live in it, there will be, there is a horizon where it will end. And, and the way we're looking at it is in approximately eight years, when Hannah graduates from the high school, the need for this kind of relief will expire. And that's the only relief that we're looking for.
I have a question for Melissa and/or Dennis. What kind of precedents do we have here, if any?
I'm not aware of a family necessity variance in the past.
But the language, excuse me, but the language exists. It's there. It says right there, you can have a family necessity variation.
Correct. Last modified in the zoning ordinance in 2004.
Yeah, I'm certainly not aware of a circumstance like what's in front of you now, where there was a coach house constructed under minor variation, such a condition imposed on a minor variation, and then a family necessity variation being requested. Certainly, family necessity variations have been granted in the past, but they are infrequent, without a doubt. So we don't see this as a precedent-setting issue. I think it's a very distinctive case in many ways.
There's never been one in front of this board. And in fact, until this case, I had never heard of such a thing. It appears to me by the drawings that we've been given that this was constructed, basically, as an accessory dwelling unit, it seems, at the time in 2001. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And do you know, at the time, what the, what was the intended use of the space at that time?
It has two portals for cars, one for it has two portals for cars. Ultimately, through usage, it was developed that one would be for the primary residence and one for the accessory building. That is, the coach house.
It's a structure that was built on top of an existing garage, correct? Or is it, was the whole thing?
No, it was all built.
The whole thing was new at that time.
There are some pictures in your packet, I believe.
Can you just, I'm sorry, I know you said this, but it was a lot, and I was trying to read some of the materials in front of us at the same time. Can you just take us through the ownership of the property from 2001 to the present? Just the ownership, Jane?
The ownership was originally with Catherine Wood and her now ex-husband. They owned it. Ultimately
They owned it in 2001 when they sought this minor variation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and then
And so they were supposed to have recorded the minor variation, but didn't?
The husband was supposed to record the minor variation, and he did not.
The husband, did the husband own the property, or did the family own the property?
The husband and the wife.
So it was owned jointly? So the two of them had an obligation to record the variation, neither one of them did?
Which he is, which the husband assumed, but did not.
Okay. So then, after 2001, we fast-forward to 2009 or so?
Roughly.
Okay, and then what happens to the title or the ownership of the property?
What happened was that Catherine's sister, Courtney, who is here, raising her hand, stepped in and through the means of an LLC, purchased the property. It was in foreclosure proceedings. When the husband left, the mother did not have the economic ability to meet the conditions of the mortgage. So her sister stepped in, created this LLC. The LLC purchased the property out of foreclosure. It then proceeded to rent the primary and the accessory building to meet the obligations of the mortgage, which frankly, the rental amounts, they pay rent at this point in time. The rental amounts fall somewhere around $750 short of the mortgage payment requirements, which they continue to make up.
Okay. Can you just explain the, or maybe Ms. Wood can, explain the thinking behind the purchase by an LLC? As opposed to Ms. Wood buying the property herself as an individual? Sure. I can explain and tell you, one of the concerns I have is in granting a variation that if we somehow tie it to the ownership in the property, one could simply sell the LLC rather than the property?
I have a very good reason.
Okay.
My name is Courtney Wood. I live at 3306 Hartsel Street, mile and a half away from my second home now, and also in the sixth ward. And I've lived in Evanston at that location for 23 years. I'm a product of the Evanston school systems. So Mr. Bambic, the ex, had a plenary order protection out against him. To me, in English, that means he trashed the property, he abused the kids. There is a court order forbidding him to be on the property, having any contact with the family. And I was terrified about doing this, that he would find out, come over to my place, where he's been to, and threaten me, threaten my husband. So when I started out innocently in this whole thing, I thought, okay, if I, if we just buy the place, fix it up, they can stay there in their schools. There's been so much trauma, no more trauma, and that he won't find out if I use this LLC. Well, now that these hearings are all public, it's out there on the internet. He's going to know I bought the place. But at least for the first several months, I could sleep better knowing he was going to show up after me, and
That's a thank you for that explanation, that actually is a good explanation. So, but just to confirm, the property is owned by the LLC?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we pay taxes.
The LLC does?
The property taxes, yeah.
Right, okay.
Okay. Does you have anything for right now, Mr. Moran, or are you good?
I mean, I'm good.
Okay. Then with that, we will go on to public comment, since people did come out and make sure that we
Sorry, I do, I'm sorry, I have one more question. It may be, it may be for Ms. Wood, or it may be for Mr. Moran, but so is, as I understand it, then, is part of your contention that there's a need for a family necessity here based on the LLC, which is owned by the applicant of the minor variation's sister, not knowing that there was supposedly some condition on the variation that the property couldn't be rented to non-family? That was a convoluted question, do you understand what I'm asking?
I think, well, I, no. But, but what I would say is, I'd go back to what I think Ms. Wood just told you, which was that the notion of having an LLC attach some anonymity
That wasn't my question, so let me, let me try again.
Maybe I didn't understand it.
Is the, is, is your contention that, is part of your contention that there is a need for a family necessity here based on the concept that the LLC did not know when it bought the property, that there was a, that the coach house had been conditioned on not having it be rentable outside the family?
I think, I think the, well, I think the other issue is, which kind of gets to maybe my follow-up question, which is, I think the intention is not just to rent, not just to rent to her sister, but to also rent one of the portions of the property to a non-family member. Like completely separate, not her sister, but somebody else.
Yeah, that's only partially what
I think the question Scott's trying to ask is, and you can answer, is was the LLC aware of any rental conditions placed on the coach house when you purchased the property?
No. Because in fact, there, I hired an attorney who had expertise in foreclosures. Never done anything like this before. She did the full title search, there were some liens and stuff, and we got that cleaned up. So in fact, when this all came out, she was shocked. Because as an attorney, you know, she went and did the whole title search thing. Also, there is a signed lease with a family then living in the coach house, a mother and two children. And the rental registration fees had been paid, both by my sister, when she owned the property by judicial deed, and then me coming in new on the scene, I filed
So the City of Evanston rental registration?
Yeah. I since learned that's two different parts of the City of Evanston organization. But when you're on the outside looking in, you think, okay, I've registered and you know, I had no idea.
Got it.
Was that your question, Scott?
Yeah, I understood it, thank you.
But to get to my follow-up, then, the intention is to have your sister live in a coach house and have, no?
She lives in the main house, where they've always lived.
Okay.
And then to have a separate, non-family member, non-Wood-Bambic person, family
Living in the coach house?
Paying rent.
Okay. If this has been going on for almost a decade, how did we get here?
It's been going on since I'd say two, two years.
Well, I mean, the
Two and a half years.
The rental The non-conforming rental of the apartment?
Yeah, I've owned the place
If it's been going on for 10 years, almost 10 years, nine years?
No.
Eight years? How long has it been rented?
It's with paying, the coach house tenants, non-family, paying rent, there were just two families, and that would be a total of about two years. Before that, it was used for storage by the family living in the primary residence. Storage and activities.
Was it built out with the kitchen and bathrooms and everything?
That was the most amazing thing, you know, finding the building plans and seeing, yes. That's how it was originally constructed in 2001. So you would think people could live there. And Mr. Moran didn't mention, but the primary point of contact with the city was the, my ex-brother-in-law, who is a contractor, was a registered contractor by the city. That's in the staff memo, so he was the main point of contact. And it just seemed that if this was his business, you know, everything was, why wouldn't it be done properly?
Okay. All right. If that's all, then I think we will try to address some public comments then at this time. So if there's anyone who would wish to speak to us? Is there Ms. Prujan who would wish to speak with us this evening? She was. You were sworn in. I may, I may check with all you guys, but I tried to pay attention, but you were sworn in earlier, so.
I was not sworn in.
You were not sworn in, shoot, well, somebody over there was. Do you swear or tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
I do, thank you.
Good evening. I am Abby Prujan. I am a joint owner of 2108 Ewing Avenue, directly next door to the structure in question. I live in a residential neighborhood of single-family dwellings, and I am opposed to the precedent that granting this variance poses. The 2112 Ewing LLC has stated clearly, clearly in their application that the property was innocently purchased in ignorance of the zoning restriction. While this is unfortunate, it is not a sufficient reason to change the zoning of our neighborhood. The family necessity variation requires that one of three conditions be met, talked about already. Since there's no physical disability or elderly parent involved in this situation, it is assumed that the third condition, alleviation of an inconvenience, is the condition being used in this application. I feel strongly that the inconvenience of not being able to recoup the financial investment and the effort to capture the greatest amount of rental income from the property is not in the intended spirit, the definition. Standard D on the application seems to deal directly with this issue by verifying that the primary purpose for the variance is not to extract additional income from the property, and it is my sense that this application does exactly that. The term "financial hardship" is being used repeatedly in this application. I would ask the Zoning Board of Appeals, how is financial hardship being documented in this case? In an effort to be good neighborly, my husband and I supported the minor variance ZAR0133M in July of 2001, which allowed the garage in question to be built higher than permitted. That variance states very clearly, it is an accessory to the principal dwelling. No more than a single family may occupy the combined dwellings, and that no portion be rented as dwelling separate from any other portion. We would never have written in support at that time if we were told that this space was designed or intended for rental use. I personally informed Courtney Wood in August 2012 that the space was not zoned for rental use. She repeatedly informed me that she was not aware of the zoning restriction. This conversation predates the significant funds that the LLC spent to improve the physical property and the apartment above the garage, which are being offered up now as part of the financial hardship in question. I applaud the altruism of the 2112 Ewing LLC in their effort to help out their family. I am sorry for the circumstances, traumatic or otherwise, that have precipitated the need for family to intervene. I have no interest in seeing this family and their kids displaced from the home in which they were raised. However, this claim of financial need and the effort to change the variance has become a polarizing issue affecting the flavor of our neighborhood. My position is not intended to be personal against my neighbor. I am protecting my family's investment. I appreciate the many improvements made to the neglected property. However, monies spent to bring the building up to code and improve the deteriorated state of the property do not necessitate a financial hardship variation when the property was purchased in ignorance of the zoning restriction. And the improvements to the structure occurred after I informed the LLC that the structure was not zoned for rental. I cannot claim that money I spend to improve my property now entitles me to a zoning variance so that I can recoup my loss. My husband and I chose to buy our home in 1997 because it is a good, safe neighborhood in which to raise our children. We live where we live because we are in a stable neighborhood, without the revolving door of renters, who might lack investment in their homes or in the neighborhood at large. Our neighborhood is not one with landlords and multiple rental situations. And those of us who have come out this evening do not wish to see the precedent set in this case. I hope that the Zoning Board of Appeals will take these considerations, these issues and the many facets of this case into consideration and oppose the application for family necessity variation. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, it's a little bit hard for me to read. Is it, is there Ms. Laisman? Were you sworn in, ma'am?
Yes.
You were, okay, thank you.
My name is Janie Laisman. I live at 2116 Ewing Avenue, two houses north of 2112, or 2112. I moved in in late November of 2009, and I have seen significant improvements in this property, and I'm very impressed by the diligence that Ms. Wood and her husband Noel Jackson have made in the property. I have not seen any, how shall I say, detriment to our neighborhood. I've known the two previous tenants in the coach house, and they have always been very civil and cordial to me. I have not seen any increased traffic in our neighborhood, and I'm very comfortable having a rental unit in the neighborhood. And in fact, the one house directly north of me is a rental. So there is, there are rental properties in our neighborhood and on our block. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knight? Were you sworn in, sir?
No.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Bradley Knight. I live at 2109 Forest View. It's immediately, immediately behind the property of 2112 Ewing that's being discussed tonight. I have a lot of notes, but I think in the interest of time, I just want to summarize the current state of affairs and what the implications would be if we were to pass this family necessity variance. We've lived there for 10 years. When I purchased the house, first question I asked the builder was what was the status of this large structure in the back? It was very clear that it was a coach house and that it was not to be rented. It was well-known by all the neighbors. Neighbors signed this variance in the year before we moved there. I talked to neighbors, so it's hard to imagine that anybody familiar with this property was unaware that that coach house could not be rented. It's currently been rented for at least two years. And there's emails that I've sent to you, that I've asked the city on at least four occasions why it continues to be rented. I have documented that there's renters in this property. So from my perspective, I'm wondering why we're not asking why this has been illegally rented for the last two years, and why some fine was not imposed for renting this illegally. So instead of getting some progress on why this was illegally rented, the next thing I find out is that the husband of the LLC the next thing I find out is that the, the husband of the LLC owner approached me with this variance, which really was surprising. Currently, we have renters in the back. This property is immediately on the other side of the alley with three large windows facing directly into our backyard on the second floor. These have a direct line of sight into my daughter's bedroom. You know, we, there's family necessities. There's my daughter, Abby, who just spoke, has two young daughters who live next door. So I think it's important to realize that although there's letters of petitions, there are certain families that are more directly impacted than other families. I would argue that the, the people who rent the house are cordial. I first went out to introduce myself to this neighbor a month ago after I learned that this was happening and within 30 seconds, he threatened to kill my dog. I had to call the police, who was reported for civil disobedience and then he immediately, that evening trespassed into my backyard with the owner of the property, threw my gate onto my deck, convinced my kids to let them into my kitchen. I had to call the police again for that. You know, aside from the negative impact on the property value, I think that this has a big impact on privacy and safety. You know, nobody who's opposed to this has any interest in disrupting this family. This is not a personal thing. It's become a very polarizing issue on our block. But I can tell you, nobody has any interest in disrupting this family. We all know what they've gone through. You know, on the other hand, it's, you know, we, we know many people have gone through situations like this and have been able to successfully manage this situation to keep their kids in the public schools in Evanston within our neighborhood after situations very similar to this. So I hope that you can see the importance of the immediate neighbor's opposition to this relative to the large numbers of other letters of support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Levy? I must have sworn you in. I saw a hand over there.
I don't think you swore me in.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jonathan Levy. I live at 2800 Payne Street, five houses to the north of the property we're discussing. I'm a real estate attorney. I do a fair amount of zoning work in the Chicago area nationally as part of my practice. Very familiar with reviewing zoning codes, how they work, what they're intended to do, what they're not intended to do. I'm deeply concerned about this whole hearing, to be quite honest. After reading the zoning code and the ordinances, the Zoning Board of Appeals has no power or authority to grant the requested variance. If you request, if you grant this request, you'll be in direct violation of the city's code. I took a look at what a family necessity variation meant. It sounds very nice, it sounds like it can mean a lot of things, but having enough expertise with zoning ordinances, I had a feeling it was meant to address physical conditions of the property. As I suspect the board knows, variations are meant to address the physical conditions of property, not the uses. A change in the use falls under the purview of the city council, not the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's in the zoning ordinance. If you read, therefore, if you, you, you have no power or authority to grant the request and if you do so, again, you'll be violating the city's code. If you read the family necessity variance, it has three criteria, which I believe Mr. Gingold cited earlier. Talks about a disabled, a disabled family member, an elderly parent, a growth in the family or an inconvenience. If you meet these three criteria, you're entitled to one of eight enumerated variations, none of which pertain to the use of the property. Adding the use of a second dwelling as a dwelling unit on a single lot is, is a change of use. That belongs to the city council, that is an ordinance. It is not something for which the zoning board has the authority to grant and if you grant it, again, you'll be violating the city code. I've also been told, I've spent a fair amount of time at the zoning office, speaking to the aldermen, speaking to the city attorney. I've been told on a couple of occasions that what is being requested here in the variation is a relief from a previously granted condition. That's not what the application said and that's not what was requested. So I don't see how you can grant relief from a, relief from a previously granted variation if that's not what was requested. It's my understanding that the zoning board's obligation is to grant requested applications, not decide what should be given on its own. I'm not suggesting that's what you're doing, but I want to point out the fact that what I've been told by the zoning office and the city, the city's attorneys doesn't comply with what the application says. I also am concerned that the zoning administrator, in recommending this, doesn't go through any kind of analysis as to why he thinks the family necessity variance applies. It's a nice title, but it doesn't address income or wealth or ability to pay the mortgage. It addresses variations to the physical attributes of a property. Nowhere here is anyone asking for a change in the physical attributes of this property. They are asking for a change in how it's going to be used, to be able to rent out two separate dwellings on a single lot in a single-family residence district. This is not a multifamily residence district. They are asking for a change of use. The zoning board does not have the authority to grant a change of use. I'm happy to answer any questions you want. I've spent a fair amount of time going through the ordinance and the case. Or I can just sit down.
I don't, I don't know if it's a direct question for you, but you can stand while we discuss, which we might as well do while you're here. Just to clarify on the use issue, and I, so this would be first off. It's my understanding that ignoring the specifics of this particular property, if, and the specific condition that was applied during, during the variance that was requested, that it's my understanding that in this district, if a person built a coach house that was in conformance with all other aspects of the ordinance in terms of lot coverage, setbacks, height, et cetera, that they would be able to rent out the upper level of that. Is that accurate?
Correct. Unless otherwise conditioned, it could be rented out.
See, that's not my understanding of the ordinance after reading through it. The ordinance talks about rental of coach houses in the historic district and prior to the enactment of the ordinance in 1993. It also talks about coach houses can be used by family members, but it doesn't talk about anything about renting them out to another property. In fact, it refers to these things as ancillary uses, not principal uses. It's a single-family district. If you have two, if you have two separate families in two separate dwellings, renting out property on the same lot, that's a multifamily use. It's not a single-family use. I'm happy for someone to refer me to the ordinance, perhaps the city's attorney can, but I don't see where it says that in, in my read of this ordinance. And I went looking for that. I went looking for the definition of coach house. I went looking for the use. I went looking for the special permitted uses which the zoning board can recommend to the city in a single-family district. This isn't any of those, from what I've seen. I'm happy to be proved wrong, but that's not what I saw.
Okay, I'm going to add that to, to my notes for stuff to look into. Thank you, sir. Any other questions at this point?
Yes, I have a question for, can we ask sort of clarifying questions? It's not for Mr. Levin, it's for.
It's to Mr. Levy?
No, it's for Ken. Could you respond to some of the, to the, in particular, the statement that Mr. Levin, Levy just made that if we do anything about this, we're in direct violation of the zoning ordinance? I'm trying to understand exactly what he meant by that.
I understand, Mr., for the record, Ken Cox, City's Law Department. I understand Mr. Levy's concern and his interpretation of the ordinance, but City's Law Department and Community and Economic Development staff don't concur with his interpretation.
Sure.
The second item in terms of, can you have a, can you have a coach house and rent it out as a homeowner?
The Law Department concurs with what Ms. Clotz says, or said, excuse me. A coach house is defined in the zoning ordinance as a secondary or accessory dwelling on the same zoning lot as a principal dwelling unit. And 6463B16, which is obviously a subpart of 646, which talks about accessory uses, states that coach houses are permitted in non, in residential and non-residential districts in the site or rear yard, subject to compliance with the rest of the zoning ordinance, as the chair mentioned before, as far as setbacks, heights, lot coverage and the like. The variation that was approved in 2001, the coach house was not compliant as far as height. It was built to 22, 22 feet tall to the, to the, the mean pitch, I believe, whereas the standard in place at the time was 17 and a half feet.
Presumably, the current tenant of the house, the former owner could be an owner of the LLC or join into the LLC and be in compliance.
No, not if there was a condition placed on it in 2001 that it not be rented.
I guess, so Ken, can I just follow up? So if a coach house can be put on a residential or non-residential property, then to Mr. Levy's point, if it's put on a single family, i-if it's put in a district that's zoned for single-family use, doesn't the coach house then have to continue with that character for the, that district?
The coach house is by definition an accessory dwelling unit. So it's accessory in the fact that it's, you know, if it's a coach house, it's going to be smaller and subservient to the larger lot on, on the property. And they'll be held in common ownership, given the fact that it's on the same lot and, you know, can't, you can't have multiple titles, as it were, to, to one particular lot. So by, based upon the definition I read you from 6183 and the provision in 6463B16, the coach house is an accessory use to the principal dwelling use on the same lot.
Have you looked at the, the record from the minor variation from 2001? And if, if you have, can you shed any light on why it was conditioned then for, for non-rental?
I have looked at it. I, I admit I haven't committed it to memory by any stretch. And also, I'm, I don't really know what the then zoning administrator, his entire thought process was as to why he might have conditioned it that way. So I would, I would hate to speculate.
I guess I'm still not quite sure your question got answered. So what I'm hearing from you is that a coach house can be built in an R1 district and rented to someone else not related to the people living in the single-family home on the lot.
So long as all of the structures and all the uses are otherwise in compliance, yes.
Got it.
May I rebut? Mr. Cox read the ordinance to say a coach house is permitted on a single-family lot. I never suggested it wasn't. But he didn't read where it was said it was permitted to be rented to another family on a single-family lot. I'd like to see where the ordinance references that specifically.
I don't, I haven't, this is a new question for me, I'll admit. I don't know, I'm not aware of anything that specifically says one may rent to, may rent a coach house that is legally constructed.
Is there anything that says that it can't?
I believe there is something in the, in the single-family district that limits how many families and it defines families.
In the house?
Per dwelling unit.
Per dwelling unit.
But it only allows one dwelling unit per district. I don't have it in front of me.
An accessory unit is not a dwelling, is different. Am I, am I right on this? Accessory units are different than single-family primary dwelling units.
The, the coach house is a separate dwelling.
A little bit of a catch.
It does say in the coach house, it talks about a coach house that can be rented to family members and you can have, a family is defined in many ways. You can have up to two, three unrelated people constituting a family within a single dwelling. But when you have dwelling units on a single lot rented, separate dwelling units, a single lot rented to separate families, that constitutes a multifamily lot and would fall under the R3, R4 subsequent districts.
I'm not an attorney, but I believe one could argue that point in many different ways. I'm, I'm just.
I agree. I'm a little surprised Mr. Cox didn't look into this, considering I raised it in my email earlier this week and I raised it in my conversation with him this afternoon.
All right. We're definitely, there will be plenty of time for us to get back to this. But I would, what I would like to do, just because of the late hour, is make sure I get to, everybody to get a first round shot, if that's okay? Because I do think that we're going to end up having to continue here. So I would, if you bother to come out, I do want to make sure that you get an opportunity to at least speak to us once. Did I hit Mr. Ross Gary?
Here, I've already submitted my comments.
Okay, just for the record, Mr. Ross Gary has already submitted his comments. That wasn't in our packet though, so we'll get that later. Or it was, or that is in our packet. Okay. Or in the, in the subsequent information that you gave us.
You have everything at this time that I've been given.
Okay. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Is there a Mr. Brown? If you could. Sorry, actually, I'm just going to need to, sorry, I do apologize. I'm just going to need to get you up here on the record. I appreciate it, thank you, sir.
In the light of everything that has been, well, first of all, my name is Gary J. Brown. I live opposite the 2112 at the corner of Simpson and Ewing. We've lived there for over 35 years. We know the history of this situation, having spoken directly to neighbors, some of whom are no longer there. I think there is a fundamental misunderstanding about the use. First, about the construction. Second, about the use. And third, I think the key issue here is the knowledge or the lack of knowledge about the original variance on the part of the owners. Perhaps there is some duplicity here. I do not know. But at least from what the neighbors knew in discussions, they were clear and they knew from the ordinance that that addition to the garage, which is now called a coach house, was supposed to be, one, for storage and, two, that it was never supposed to be rented out to members who were not of the family. I think those facts stand clear. The issue of family necessity, I think, is also a major one. Necessity of an LLC? We, we do know and we do, we are concerned about the children being able to stay in the neighborhood and go to school and finish out their school. But what is to prevent them from doing that? Is it the necessity of the family or is it the necessity of the owners? And what is the analysis of the necessity of the owners? What is that financial necessity? Has that been considered? Perhaps another point is the question of the value of property in the neighborhood. Mr. Moran states in his petition that there would be no decrease in value of the property. That's an opinion and, and it can go both ways. But there is enough concern by members who live on that block, including a neighbor who lives right across the street, who has been there for over 50 years, who is very close to the family. She is also opposed to that variance. So in summary, I would say my opposition coincides with what we've heard before for the points that I've elaborated. Thank you.
Sorry, sir, really quick, did you say you were, what was your address again?
2741 Simpson on the corner.
Okay, sorry.
Of Ewing and Simpson.
I had you on the wrong corner here.
Okay, I'm on the, I'm across the street.
Got it.
Okay.
I've got a map here, I just had you in the wrong spot.
I have a question for Mr. Brown. The opposition that I'm hearing from the neighbors, and this could be a question to Mr. Knight and Mr. Levy as well, and anybody else. There's a lot of concern about changing, you know, that's an R1 neighborhood, et cetera, property values. What do you feel about the recommendation? How do you feel about the recommendation? How do you feel about the recommendation that was made to limit this variation until such time as Hannah graduates from high school? So we're not talking about a forever change to your neighborhood, that then suddenly there's always renters at 2112, but we're talking about...
Yeah, right.
Them staying there?
From, from my perspective, they could stay there without the property being rented. Why couldn't they?
What if, what if, as they presented, that they needed that income?
Who needs that income? The owner needs the income.
Okay, so I think you just answered my question. You're saying, you're saying no. You don't, you don't...
Well, right. I mean, look at, look at the basics of it.
Sure.
Suppose I want to add an addition to my garage. I go before you, I get a variance. 10 years later, there's something that happens. I rent it out. I've got a precedent here. There's, there's family necessity. Who's to say that the neighbors across the street, who have a large property, could not do the same? So aside from the issues that we've discussed here, we're also discussing something that involves precedent. How can you not allow some X not to do it if Y has done it for the same reasons?
If the condition was in place, though, that, that wouldn't apply.
What condition?
The condition that the variation expires upon the younger child's graduation from high school. It's a very, it's a very specific variation.
Then what happens to the property? What happens to the property?
I'm, I'm not following you. What do you mean, what happens to it?
Well, does it go back, where you can, you cannot rent the so-called coach house?
I believe, I believe that's their intention.
It does not say that in the, in ordinance. It doesn't even give the number of years in the petition.
I don't think it's in the petition, but it's...
It's not in the petition.
It's up for, it's up for debate.
It's up for debate.
It's up for debate.
Exactly. It's not determined. So just as, until there were complaints by neighbors, there was renting going on, and then, and neighbors realized, hey, wait a minute, what's going on here? That's not supposed to be rented.
Sure, I, I think you answered my question. Thanks.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to add, I don't think it's quite fair to put the opponents of this proposal in the position of being perceived as opposed to the children or to the family. This is really not...
I'm not trying to do that. I'm just trying to ascertain what your position is exactly.
My position would be that this has been rented for two years, and I'd like to ask the members of this board what my recourse was for the past two years. It's been illegally rented. I've sent emails multiple times. The city has visited the property.
That's outside the scope of what this board addresses.
That's, that's not our, we, we have absolutely no...
But then I guess it's consistent with your question of, if you, if you were to put some conditions upon this, my argument would be that the prior conditions haven't even been enforced, so I wouldn't be in agreement to any further manipulation of the conditions.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Just for the record, there was Mr. King, or Mr. Knight, sorry, on the antenna. I don't know that I swore you in. Do you swear or refer to the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm here, Mark Tenham, 2448 Lincolnwood Drive. I'm here in support of the request for variance. I think it is one of a certain time limit, as was mentioned by Alderman, or former Alderman Moran. It's also one of a very unique situation. We live in very difficult times where people are trying to make a situation work in, in bad economy, and obviously some unfortunate family situation here, too. I think that it's a very stable neighborhood. I've, I lived there for seven years and just one block away. I think there, I know there are other rental properties in the neighborhood. Currently at 2448, I live across from a rental property. We've had two owners in one year. They've been great in the neighborhood. They, it's been supported by all the neighbors. And quite honestly, it's been nice to have someone in the house rather than to have it vacant while someone is doing a two-year sabbatical. So I do support this. I hope you will consider that and, but like I said, I do think it's a very temporary condition and that it's, it's, you know, obviously a very unique situation. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who didn't make the list who would wish to speak to us at this point, who hasn't had a chance to get to us this evening? Because of the, the late hour and a series of questions that I think that we've put together here that, that could use some additional research. I am going to recommend that we probably should continue this hearing on to our next regularly scheduled meeting. When, when is that, Melissa?
Our next regularly scheduled meeting is June 4th, and the following meeting after that is June 18th.
Before we make a move to continue, I would like to ask that we really get some clarification on the whole renting the coach house thing in an R1. I'm, I'm still, forgive me for not, for being kind of unclear on this, or not understanding what's going on.
Yeah, and that's, and that was part of my comment, was between the late hour and I think there's, I think there's plenty of clarification to be had, so...
Yeah, so if we, yeah, if we can have some research presented or whatever at the next meeting. If a substantial amount of research is required, I would ask that we wait until the June 18th meeting.
Why's that?
Just because of other things going on? For the June 4th meeting, the packet materials would need to go out the week before, and with the shorter week because of the Memorial Day holiday, it, there's not a lot of work time to answer questions.
I would concur with Melissa's suggestion.
May I speak to them?
Sure.
I don't mean to really throw a wrench into this, but this is a very difficult time for the neighborhood. As good weather approaches, I think people are going to be out, and it's going to be a further difficult time. I would hope, and if there's any way possible that you could hear this in the next ZBA meeting, which, what is the date?
June 4th.
And that's roughly two weeks. I, I think it would be a real credit to this board and also the staff, and also would help to alleviate some of the tensions in the neighborhood, which I think is very much needed.
Oh, because of this specific case, you're saying?
Correct, yes, yes.
If we could get this thing figured out?
That would be my request, if, if possible. I don't know how much research is required. It seems more like a legal issue than zoning issue. So I don't know. That's, that's my request and...
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with just getting some pretty simple clarification on that.
Right. So staff can comply with that request. We'll make it happen.
Okay, so I'm hearing June 4th, and if something really crazy happens, then we will certainly let everybody, everybody know. So with that, is there a motion?
I would move in the matter 13ZMJV0038 regarding 2112 Ewing Avenue, that we continue this matter until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be on June 4th, 2013. And we're in council chambers. That's a question.
Second.
Here, here, here in council chambers.
Sorry, sorry. Second, the motion.
It's been moved. And second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, sorry.
The motion is carried, so we will continue this hearing at our next regularly scheduled meeting. And I just want to thank everybody for their participation. I know it's a lot to sit through this with us, but we certainly appreciate to, to hear from you. So thank you, and with that, we are adjourned.